... of 2024, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll report on the votes taken in closed session on a five to nothing vote. The school committee approved and ratified the agreement with Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCME, Local 1137. Mr. Perrier, would you give us the financial impact of that contract?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the 1137 contract, the expense for the raises, 2%, 4%, 4% is $325,000. That's the biggest fiscal impact and that ramps up by 4% and then 4% following that in the two out years. The other fiscal component has to do with adjusting payouts for, not payouts, excuse me, buybacks for personal time and for sick time. That's a very, that's a miniscule fiscal impact. We don't really pay a lot of that now. The hope is that by increasing these buyback amounts, it will encourage union membership to come to work, save those sick days, save those personal days, and get paid out for them at the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. You please stand and join me for a moment of silence and the pledge. And let's keep in mind the nearly 3,000 people that died 23 years ago on 9/11 in New York City and Washington and Pennsylvania. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Does anyone want to address the school committee this evening?
Good evening. Donald Burke, Vice Chairman of the Windsocket School Committee. But here I am going to speak again as Donald Burke, esteemed lecturing night of the Windsocket Lodge Number 850. And my purpose here is to introduce Mr. Gary Cassidy, who is the esteemed loyal knight of the Windsocket Lodge 850, and he would like to make a special presentation. And before he does that, Al, would you please come over here?
Al, on behalf of the Windsocket House Lodge. On behalf of the Windsocket House Lodge, I sit, I give you this certificate of appreciation for letting us use the field on Saturday in the facilities. It's very well deserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that and congratulations. Does anyone else want to address the school committee this evening? Next we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I am very excited to introduce Mr. Tony Freeman as the new assistant principal at Villanova Middle School. Tony is a graduate of Tufts University and Simmons College. He gained invaluable experience and knowledge in the areas of peer coaching, in the use of case studies, current research, and lesson studies to promote best instructional practices for teachers in the highest level of achievement for students. Tony has 25 years of teaching experience in urban, suburban, rural, and semi-urban middle and high schools. As director, as district director of science, he worked directly with the assistant superintendent and director of curriculum and instruction in an administrative capacity and expanded his efforts and influence to improve student achievement in science. Based on Tony's education and work experience, I am very pleased to appoint him to the position of assistant principal for Villanova Middle School. And Tony is here this evening, so I want to welcome him to Windsocket. We're very excited to have you. And congratulations. Next, I would like to announce that for the past three years, the staff at Toyota of Mansfield has held fundraisers to solicit back-to-school supplies to support Windsocket students and teachers. This amazing group of individuals collected significant amounts of pencils, pens, backpacks, lunches, and crayons, just to name a few items. On behalf of the staff and students of the Windsocket Education Department, we extend our sincere thank you to the staff of Mansfield Toyota for their generosity and support over the years. So I want to thank them. Lastly, I want to recognize the district custodial and maintenance staff. This is the first summer in many summers where our custodial staff and maintenance staff have had access to all of the buildings over an extended period of time. The committee is aware that the last three years, we have held summer school throughout the district, which has made it difficult and challenging for them to really deep-clean the buildings. And I've gotten, I've been able to get around to the buildings, obviously, and the floors look wonderful and they've really done a great job. I want to thank Mr. Bob Lizzot for his leadership. Bob and his department have done a great job of preparing not only the buildings for teachers and staff, but also doing some facilities work in terms of specifically the science labs at the high school. They did a lot of work in preparing and building cabinetry and installing cabinetry there. So they did a great job. I also want to thank Mr. Natariani. This must be your night of awards. But I want to thank Al for his guidance and his leadership of the custodial and facilities and maintenance departments on a job well done. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, that concludes my recognition, recognitions and announcements this evening.
You know, having taken the walkthrough through the high school and seen the library, the work that's going on with the auditorium especially, and then the labs, saw that when all that equipment was coming in, it was still in boxes, and then seeing the finished product, what an incredible job they've done. So congrats, Mr. Natariani. You and your staff did a great job with us. I mean, those students must be really happy to be studying in those labs. What a change from prior years. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next we'll go to the approval of minutes and I'll make a motion to approve the August 26, 2024 special closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections to those minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to approve the August 26, 2024 special open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to approve the August 28, 2024 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And lastly, I make a motion to approve the August 28 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next we'll go on to the consent agenda and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Any member of the committee want to take any items out of order or discuss any items within the agenda? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first agenda item, personnel matters. Committee has a copy of the most recent certified positions and hourly stipend extracurricular positions, as well as separations, transfers, and leave of absence since the last meeting. The district is working very hard to fill as many positions as we can. Specifically, we have 14 paraprofessional positions that are unfilled. There are two, however, that are pending, so hopefully that 14 will go down to 12. We have nine teaching positions throughout the district. Four of those are pending, so hopefully that will go from nine to nine to five. And we have two custodial positions that are open at this point in time. So I would be happy to try to answer any questions the committee might have at this time.
Anyone? Dr. McGee?
The second agenda item is an update on the bullying reports, as the committee is aware and the community is aware. Bullying reports are due to the school committee at the end of the year. I have a copy here. I know each committee member has the report in their folder. So what I will do is I will begin by just reviewing the number of total incidents. The second column is the total number of bullying incidents that, in fact.
Occurred.
Occurred, and then the number that did not occur. So I'm going to start in the beginning of the year because this is, I ask the principals to send me the first half of the year, and that's from September through the end of December, and then the beginning of January through the end of the school year. So September 2023 through December 2023, there are a total of 34 reported incidents. Of those 34, 28 were deemed to be actual bullying incidents, six were not. From January 2024 through the end of the school year, June 2024, there were a total of 43, of which 36 were credible, and seven was established did not occur. You also have the breakdown by school of the total number of incidents that were reported in those that were, once there was an investigation that was conducted through the principal or assistant principal or support staff, social worker, psychologist, those that established to not be valid. So I would be happy to answer any questions you might have there. You also have in your file the, let me just pull that up for one second. You have the activities, the anti-bullying activities and strategies. That's, this is something that is, that's due to my office. The principals provide me with this information beginning of the school year, so we have a sense of what they're doing during the course of the school year to try to provide climates and cultures in their schools that support kindness and are, you know, anti-bullying strategies or any type of activities that they might have. I'm not going to go through each one of those because the list is kind of extensive. I think what you'll find is that there's some, there's a lot of consistency between the buildings, especially the elementary level, in terms of their strategies that they use. They might call them different things, but for the most part, they are very similar. And there's that, we have that consistency across the district as we have our social emotional groups. Each of our schools has a PBIS program and they have staff that coordinate those as well as SEL. So all of those are kind of meshed together as the administrators and their staff put their anti-bullying strategies and activities together.
There's two schools that I'd like to take a peek and look at a little closer. Like to start with Hamlet.
Yep.
Hamlet had 12 incidents. This is through December, 12 incidents, actually nine bullying incidents did occur. Then I look in the second half of the year, I see Hamlet as eight and still has six. Are these the same students that we know?
So they, they should.
And how was this being handled?
So.
Looks like it's the same.
So they're different. The ones in the beginning of the year, those numbers are different from the numbers at the second half of the year.
Okay. I guess then I'd like to focus on Globe, second half of the year, because obviously we've seen 27 bullying incidents, and then we had 23 that actually happened. Maybe some, maybe we can have an explanation what's going on.
Sure. So I thought that that might be something that you would, you know, have a few questions about. So I actually invited Nichelle Kennel, the principal of Globe Park, and Nichelle can kind of go over with the committee the data.
Even the first quarter is the second highest out of it.
Right.
Numbers.
Yep.
Hi. So I am very diligent in always filing paperwork. With regards to the current policy, if any student says the word bullying, a form is automatically filled out. At the elementary level, a situation can occur in which a kid says they were being bullied, and it can be a minor instance where I personally might think that it was not bullying, but if the situation did occur, I did mark it as did occur. That being said, at the second half of the school year, we did have some grooming happening from high school students to my fifth grade with regards to some gang activity that Dr. McGee and Kyle reacted to. I also had an influx of racial language and what I would call aggress, physical aggression towards students, and they were repeat students in many cases.
And maybe you can just describe what's being done or how you're handling it now in the new year?
So even in that process, we did restorative conversations. We had school-wide committees or school-wide assemblies with regards to the racial languages and things to that nature. And we talked about what may be socially appropriate, because that's what they see in here on TV, it is not socially acceptable in a school. And we talked about how what you think is okay with you and your friends is not okay to other students. We also do follow-up conversations, parent meetings, and things to that nature. This year, we are coming out with a bang. Gus is making a three-hour appearance on Friday with our PBIS pet pratties, trying to reinforce our core values around respect and ownership, kindness, and community. Many of those students that we struggled with are now obviously not in my particular building, they have moved on to the middle schools. I'm very hopeful that some of that, like my current grade levels don't have issues with that. So I'm kind of hoping that it'll help kind of streamline itself.
If I could add also, Mrs. Kennel mentioned that Kyle Quadros is involved. I know that Kyle met with groups of students where there was some incidents of some racial comments that were, that were made. And I know that the students that are, so the fifth grade students last year who would be moving to the middle school this year, I know that Kyle was going to check in on those to make sure that those incidents didn't transfer from Globe Park to the middle school.
Or majority of the incidents of fifth graders?
Yes.
Okay.
One of your first comments were about the high school affecting the fifth grade. Could you explain what happened? What that mean, but, you know, it's a little more explanation.
So I was made aware of some high school students that I.
Miss Kennel, would you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry, I'm pretty loud usually, so I apologize. So I was made aware, I'm going to, my months are a little, I'm going to say spring, that I had a student situation that Kyle, Dr. McGee, and I were really quick trying to investigate. And it turned out a few high school students were, had started the grooming process of a group of four of my fifth grade boys. And there was some potential that maybe they were involved in some crime activity and things to that nature. So Officer Scott participated in that with us.
Fifth graders?
Yes. Sorry, I don't know.
And where does Globe's fifth graders, what middle school does the Globe School go to?
It depends on the year. Last year, my building was so large, my kids were actually split between both buildings. Typically, I'm a feeder in Tavilla, but it just depends.
Because that used to be our program, my three's elementary into one.
Right.
Yep. So that's still in place.
It is.
And Globe, main, most of Globe is going to go to Villanova.
Yes, sir.
And they'll meet our new assistant principal this year.
So look what she's sending your way.
They're not all bad, trust me.
Okay.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. I just.
Mrs. Costa?
So going into the new year, how the second half of the year, total of 43, 36 occurred. So going into the new year, out of those 36 that occurred, are we like making sure that it's like Chairman asked that, if they're the same occurrences, like same instances? And if they are, what are we doing to make the situation better? Because the numbers jumped a lot in the second half of the year. And bullying is just not okay because there's a lot of cyberbullying going on that's not being caught. And I know that's kind of out of our control, but it does carry over into our school systems. And then I know a couple of issues where the people and the students that are getting bullied eventually get tired. They don't want to be bullied and they react, and then they get in trouble because they reacted to their bully, but maybe it's not being taken as seriously, and that's why the bully, the person that's getting bullied reacted, but now they're not allowed to do end-of-year activities, or they're not allowed to do things that they worked really hard for all year long, but they got bullied all year long, and then they finally were like, all right, I'm done with this, I'm, I don't want to deal with this anymore, I'm going to stand up to my bully, and then things happen. And then that person that unfortunately endured all that bullying stood up for themselves that one time, and now they're in trouble, they can't do things. So in senses like that, I don't think it's kind of fair that that child has to deal with that because they did stand up to their bully, you know, and it's just not right, it's not fair. So I just want to know what's being done to make sure that that doesn't happen as well.
I mean, I think those are, those are conversations and meetings that the principals have with those students and their families. I suspect that the principals, when they, when they get to the end of the year and they review their bullying data, they have students who are sort of flagged for the following year. I think she might have something more to say.
Kennel actually meets.
So they might have, so I would suspect that, that when they go into the new year, those students are on the radar. I know that in some instances, much like we do with, when there, when there are fights, especially at the secondary level, when there are fights, those students and their parents meet with me. I designate Fridays. They meet with me before they're readmitted with the principal from the respective school. And I've had instances with bullying. In fact, I, there was an incident this past year where I met with a, with a parent and a student with Mrs. Kennel and with Mr. Quadros, and this, this student was bullying. So in those instances, I will also intervene if the principal says, you know, that, that they think that that would be the best next step.
Okay.
I can also tell you that I meet with my mental health support staff each bit at that time, each Monday. So far, it's bi-weekly right now, but each Monday. And students were actually put on behavior support plans, positive ones, trying to curb that behavior. And we meet for an hour and we discuss any of those red flag students, and we make plans to try to alter that behavior, promote positivity instead of the negativity. We also have restorative like groups where they meet and they like do activities together. We also have social workers that meet with them for.
Oh, hello to you too.
Like lunch bunches and things to that nature as well to curb some of those behaviors.
It might be.
Hamlet ghost.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we were a little distracted by that.
Sure. Any, any other questions before?
No, that's.
Before I move, move on. I wanted to, I am remiss, I, I want to introduce our Windsocket High School student representative, Leilani Sanchez, who is here for the first time representing Windsocket High School. So I want to welcome Leilani. We're really, really excited and looking forward to working with you this year.
Yeah, welcome.
Congratulations.
Any other questions for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. Mrs. Kepiscus, would you give us the CILAC update, please?
Sure. Short but sweet, CILAC meeting was September 5, 2024, 6:00 PM. Meeting was called to order, we waited 15 minutes, no parents, no guardians joined the meeting, so we adjourned at 6:15. The next meeting is October 3, 2024, at 6:00 PM virtually.
Well then, I think that's the shortest report you've ever given.
Do we, is there a way that we're going to try to hopefully encourage parents?
Ms. Morell and I have been discussing that for the last year or more. I'm sending the notification with the agenda out. I usually send a reminder a week before the meeting, send the agenda out on Monday or Tuesday of the week of the meeting. That's really all I can do. I work off an email list from people providing me with their emails that they want to be included. I have no way of contacting all the special ed parents, that's simply not permissible under FERPA. I'm told that the IEP meetings, every IEP meeting, they were offered the CILAC brochure. I know I've got a call from Beth Campanelli today, she asked me for a schedule of all the meetings for the year, so that schedule could be included, and I provided that to her. I guess we're just going to have to see what happens. We talked about whether or not meeting in person would improve attendance. I don't think it would. But I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Don.
And I just, addition to that, Dr. McGee also sends out a blast that goes, I believe, to the whole district for upcoming meetings and stuff. Sometimes we get a parent or two from that, but for the most part, that's what we've gotten.
So wait and see, see what happens.
And I know it's also included in the superintendent's newsletter that you send them every Sunday. I see that when we're on the schedule, it's there. I think we're doing everything we can. I always say to parents that are complaining to me about anything, you know, show up, but they don't, and I don't know why, because superintendent's there, the special ed directors there, the assistant special ed directors there, often Dr. Holt's there, Sudariso's there, Al's there, there's a ton of directors there. I don't know why people don't take advantage of the opportunity to ask their questions, but they don't.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yeah, is CILAC required by the state? Is that one of committees that are required?
It's required by federal and state laws, required under IDEA, and in fact, there was just. And in fact, there was just legislation passed in this past general assembly session, not this past one, the one before, that mandates the districts that don't have CILACs in place to take certain actions in order to make an act of CILAC. So you're lucky you avoid that because I'm still here. I'm still looking for somebody else to take over. Obviously, I've been saying that because it should be a person who, who's a special ed parent, a child with an IEP or even a 504, who has a child matriculating him in Socket. I no longer do. But the person that was supposed to take over for me when I was elected to the school committee in 2018 lasted about six months and then walked away. So I ended up back in this position rather than see the committee fold. And I'm still there. But to say I have boots on the ground, ew, a bug. I don't have boots on the ground. To be able to say I know what's actually going on in a building because I don't have any children in the building. And that's why we rely on parents to let us know. And I just wanna clarify because I know people have asked, if you're a teacher in district and you have a child with an IEP in district, you can still attend CILAC. It's not mutually exclusive. So even if we have teachers or educators, paraprofessionals, staff that have children with IEPs, you're entitled to attend as well. And there's no reason for you not to. I try to share information about what's going on locally. There was a, is a major change coming into the IEP process that's gonna be in place by July of '26. I try to share interesting articles. Ms. Kim was kind enough to send me some brochures on the library programs. I share those. I try to drum up as much attention as I can, short of like waving a flag. I don't know what else I can do.
Agreed. Anyone else? Now make a motion to receive and place on file a CILAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Kepiscus, would you give us the curriculum subcommittee update?
You had a really short CILAC report and you had to ask a question and you made it long. But I do have I'm sorry, I have a longer subcurriculum, curriculum subcommittee report.
Okay, no questions.
We met, no questions. Curriculum subcommittee met on 9/9/2024. We had a pretty busy agenda. After approving our minutes, we'd had a discussion of the model for instruction, the innovation teaching, teaching model, which most of us are familiar with, Chat Stanley. Remember Chat Stanley? It's nothing new to our district, but this year a pamphlet has been created in which all of the segments of our model of instruction are included and compiled. This pamphlet is as a result of the work that's been going on all year with instructional empowerment. This coming school year, if approved by the school committee at its next meeting, not this meeting, the next one, this model will be extended to all classrooms, all the way down to the kindergarten. This ongoing work will be funded by the last of the LEAP grant awarded to RIDE as part of the COVID learning loss initiatives. When asked if teachers were on board with this change in the instructional model, the subcommittee was advised that despite some initial pushback, the program has been well received and as it has developed over the past year, more teachers are on board. Many teachers have also indicated that they have noticed a decrease in behaviors in classrooms in which this method has been used for the last two years. The bottom line is that the instructional method is both effective and research-based. Quite simply, it is the best practice. All district administrators who were present agreed that they too were on board. Concerns over rolling this out during the period of staff shortages were recognized. But the hope is that staffing provided by instructional empowerment through the LEAP grant should assist with that issue if the spending of those grant funds in this manner is approved by the school committee. Part of this work will include a rigor walk by their personnel to check and assist with the fidelity of the program. All were assured that this method of instruction is inclusive of both the MLL students, which is in large part where it began, as well as students receiving special education through an IEP. We next move on to the discussion of the revised elementary reading assessment. As a result of the push out of the Wonders reading curriculum for ELE and the elementary schools, it was agreed that a new assessment tool would need to be developed and used in our elementary schools to assess student skills for at least two reasons. Our old method focused on guided reading, which was no longer the focus of our instruction method in teaching reading. And that former assessment was also ineffective in assessing the pre-reading segments of the science of reading. This new assessment is intended to help the district identify discrete reading issues, which might be the basis for students who struggle as well as those who excel. This new assessment looks at decoding skills, which were not part of the former assessment. The prior test was as potentially flawed as its results were very subjective in that two teachers could score the same student very differently. This increased the ease with which certain elements of reading that should have been assessed were missed, potentially resulting in issues and problems with student reading skills also being missed. The former assessment was also further flawed in that it jumped right to the end of the learning to read process with grade level assessments. Under the new assessment, the first focus is on sounds and features of sound with words broken into components and with letters added to the sounds later, but only when the student is ready. Students are not dragnetted from step to step of the reading process, but are not moved to the next level until they are ready, all of which results in a more effective means of teaching reading. This assessment will be rolled out across the district at the elementary level from grades 3 through 5, with some groundwork being laid in our pre-K classrooms as well through our aligned wonders curriculum. The rote memorization with which we all experienced in school has simply been demonstrated not to be effective and that it simply doesn't work for all kids and leaves too many behind. We must first meet students where they are and progress them through the reading instruction process slowly and at their needed pace. This method, although, method also does a better job of connecting reading and writing down the instructional road. We then moved on to the discussion of the MLL success team grant. In the 2022, 2023 school year, the district was awarded a grant to develop a walkthrough tool to be used to assess how what was going on in our classrooms aligned with results. A group of WED, MLL educators, administrators and support staff volunteered many hours over the last year to develop an assessment tool. The tool is also designed to make sure our model of instruction, with its focus on discourse, was being honored by our MLL students in fidelity, with fidelity, excuse me. Part of the process is to make sure that our MLL students are involved and active discourse in our classrooms as it, is it amongst the best way for them to learn valuable verbal English skills in addition to reading and writing skills. A committee member asked for further explanation as to the meaning of the element that curriculum should be culturally responsive, which is one of the elements of the tool. I was explained that this reference requires that instruction respectfully recognize that students may come from and have different cultural traditions and that those differences can be an inclusive instruction model in the classroom. For example, holidays celebrated or not celebrated in their culture may be explored and compared as to how American holidays are celebrated. This tool was piloted in the middle school this past year, but will be extended through the entire district this coming school year. This evaluation tool is really applicable to all students in all settings, but will use, will be used with a focus on MLL classrooms and students in the coming year. The district thanks all who were involved in developing this tool. The next meeting of curriculum will be on November 4th, 2024 at 3:30. There will be no curriculum subcommittee meeting in October. With that, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any comments or changes, questions for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Notoriani to give us the technology facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as of today, we have 140, 40 work orders in the, for technology. 126 of them are for like technology infrastructure such as Chromebooks and internet and repairs to devices. 16 of them are related to the data systems. Both the technicians and the data staff are continuing to provide support for our systems and resolve things as quickly as possible. Starting in October, we're gonna be in the distribution of the new MacBooks for each staff member. We're gonna follow our traditional rollout model where we go to one building at a time, pass out the MacBooks, make sure the staff are comfortable with their new device and move on to the next building. We're expecting that this is probably gonna take us several months. In addition to that, when we roll out the MacBooks, we're also gonna be implementing new cybersecurity protocols as required by our insurance carrier and which is best practice, which more or less hones in on setting up two-factor authentication, which is oftentimes you're seeing now with your banking, when you log in, you get a text message or a message sent to another device. So we'll be setting that up for all of our faculty, staff here in, in the district. In addition to that, I met with the technology staff this morning during our regular monthly meeting. We've established a goal of being under 50 work orders by the end of the month and getting back to the time, response time of 24 to 72 hours, which is not unreasonable. Prior to the pandemic, my expectations were that work orders would be under 25 on any given day and our response time was 24 to 48 hours. So I, I know it's possible. We have an excellent technology staff here in the district who work very hard. And I, I think it's a goal that we can accomplish moving forward and I'll be reporting it out regularly. Student registrations, over the summer, we had 300, approximately 385 kindergarten registrations and 235 grades 1 through 12 registrations. Since the start of school, which was, I think, what, Wednesday, the 28th, we've had 45 kindergarten registrations and approximately 95 grades 1 through 12 registrations. So it's been a very busy last week and a half. I think it's like nine school days. And Cheryl Rondo, I wanna thank her. She works very, very hard at entering student registration for the entire district. They all come to McPhee and register centrally. So I wanna acknowledge her efforts in that because if you look at, that's about what, over 10, 10 a day. It doesn't stop all day. And, and there's a lot of, a lot of work, legwork in terms of running down paperwork, so. For the facilities custodial services, they did an excellent job this summer, as Dr. McGee indicated earlier. As of today, there are 343 work orders in the system. Approximately 262 are assigned to our internal staff, with the remaining work orders assigned out to outside vendors, contractors such as a plumber or HVAC technician or whatnot. This is actually a fairly good number for the start of the school year because even though they did all those projects, they still were able to, to work on many work orders that were submitted throughout the last year and throughout the summer. So we anticipate being caught up later this fall unless there's some type of an uptick in, in work orders that we don't foresee. Transportation. So actually, I'm gonna skip down past transportation, we'll cover that last. I'm gonna skip over to SRO, school safety. So Dr. McGee and I have been meeting with our SROs regularly to talk about, you know, planning, different safety measures. For the 24, 25 school year, it's worth noting, we have some new SROs in the district. So Officer Brigette has moved up from being the roaming SRO to the high school. Officer Velino is still here, remains here at Hamlet Middle School. Officer Pratt is covering over at Villanova Middle School. And Officer Nicholas DeLazio is now the new roaming SRO and he's starting to make the rounds throughout the district. We had a meeting with them recently to talk about Al's training and the initiative that will continue for the 24, 25 school year. We're completing our annual safety checklist and we'll be reviewing them with Dr. McGee probably sometime next week. If you recall, those are state mandated updates that we have to do on an annual basis. And Dr. McGee will present to the school committee and executive session our findings, which is required by state law. And then just project-wise, we alluded to them earlier, but we've pretty much completed the furniture upgrade at the high school. All classrooms received new furniture. There's a new library media center. We have cafeteria furniture arriving later this month. There's a new wellness center furniture that'll be done later this month. The auditorium is in progress. The gymnasium is a couple of years behind schedule. They're redoing the floor. Beyond that, Dr. McGee and Brad and I met with the construction firm and Nancy Giadano and her team to go over the layout for the new locker room renovation, which will start within the next couple of weeks and scheduled to be concluded by the end of December. Transpro and the theater arts room and music room received new window structures. You know about the science labs. Savoy received a new library media center. We're just waiting for a few remaining pieces of furniture there. The Poe Theater building and Harris Elementary Schools received a revamp of their gymnasiums, new painting, wall treatments, new floor, backboards, hoops, sound panels. Their library media centers were completely redone like Savoy's. We're just waiting again for like, I think, student chairs. All the books were removed. Everything was completely renovated and put back in place. And the cafeteria at both of those buildings received new painting, refreshment of the ceiling tiles and sound panels. So those are all projects that we worked with the construction firm and our, our internal staff worked on. Those are the projects Dr. McGee was alluding to earlier. They were very, very busy and it wasn't just the science labs.
Right.
And then my last piece of my update this evening is transportation. So if I can give the committee some brief context to transportation, I, I was taking a vacation at the end of the summer. Mr. Perry and I, Perry, Perry and I met with the Durham representative and then Mrs. Morell and I met with the Durham representative to make sure we had coverage for all of the various needs for transportation. I can tell you right now that we, we had meetings. There was no indication at our meetings that there were gonna be any transportation issues. So that was with Mr. Dumont from Durham. Bless you, Mr. Leclair. My understanding is while I was away and, and now that I'm back, that there have been some significant issues with Durham School Services. I guess it'd be an understatement to say there are major concerns. So Dr. McGee and I have been meeting with them regularly throughout this entire process, once we discovered that they, they made some changes in the system. So it's my understanding that they recalibrated all of the routes. I'm gonna be very frank, I, I don't think they communicated that very well. As a matter of fact, I, my understanding is that some bus stops have changed and, and they rebuilt all of the routes. And I'm gonna tell you right now, nowhere in my conversations, or with my colleagues, or with Dr. McGee, and I, I stand by my reputation here in Winsocket for the last eight years, was that communicated to us, I would say properly, but I'm just gonna say it wasn't communicated. They did publish the routes, they sent them over to us, we shared them with the schools. But whatever has changed, I'm of the opinion it's been significant and we are slowly going through whatever changes have been made and making adjustments to make sure that our, our parents and guardians and most importantly, our students receive better service than what, what they're receiving right now. It, it, there's been some significant issues with it. And I think we're gonna have a more in-depth update in the, in the very near future, but we're still trying to figure out exactly what has occurred. That being said, they did, so you may recall Lisa Lamott was their operations manager for a long period of time. Lisa left Durham in February. As recently as July, we continue to ask, when is there going to be an operations manager in place? I believe we informed them that, that this need would happen, you know, as quickly as possible, school starting. They did hire Mr. Bruce Lemoine, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, who's in attendance at the meeting. In fairness to Bruce, Bruce has been here for about a week and a half. So I just wanna make sure it's clear with the committee. Bruce is here in case afterwards you have any questions, Bruce, if he sticks around. To be fair to Bruce, he's been here for about a week and a half, two weeks tops. He started right, right towards the end of August. So Bruce has come in and he's trying to make adjustments. He's looking at our processes and procedures. I, I guess I would say, and I'm sure I speak for everyone's opinion in the administration, it's been, it's, it's been a disappointment in terms of, of how they've, they've performed. So this is a new low for them as far as I'm concerned. So we are working on making corrections. They've emailed me today about some adjustments to be made and those will start next Monday. They will not start until we inform the principals, the secretaries and hopefully, well not hopefully, more importantly, the parents so that they know there's a change coming because if they're not communicating properly, that is a concern. We're gonna monitor those adjustments, probably make more adjustments and then we are gonna then focus in on the afternoons as well. But we need to get a handle on the fact that our students need to arrive to school on time. They need to be picked up and there needs to be better communication from the company.
Mr. Notoriani, with all the issues that we have with the changed routes that were not communicated properly and now parents are calling, texting, you've gotten them, we're getting them. What kind of timeframe are we expecting these changes or adjustments to be made given that we have a new operating manager that's only been here a week and a half?
So the operating manager, we had a conversation this morning. My understanding is they had a meeting late morning with some proposed adjustments that they would like to have occur. I did review them briefly this afternoon. I'll be having a conversation with them tomorrow morning because I'd like to know, so let's be frank here from, from what we've heard from Durham. Historically, we've heard from, we're gonna make this change, it's gonna fix things. And then it doesn't. So they're proposing some changes. But what I would like to see in writing from them is what do these changes, what occurs or what is the effect of these changes? So I, so while they sent them over and they told us the reasoning behind it, I wanna know specifically what metric or what are we going to measure to see what changes are, are occurring for the betterment of, of our, our district and our students? And that piece is something we need to discuss tomorrow morning because once I find out what they're saying will improve, we're then going to share that with the principals and the secretaries. I would like the principals to see what changes are being proposed. I want them to validate and make sure that that's accurate and that's what's occurring. Because I, I'll be frank with you, the messaging and communication's been atrocious. As you're aware, we get a lot of waiver requests to the policy. And now I'm gonna be very specific. There have been waived, so we send the paperwork over. They might tell us, we can't accomplish or we can't, we can't make this waiver occur because it's gonna cause a problem with the busing. And I've had parents contact my office or our schools and tell us that when they call the bus company directly, the bus company tells them, we can do it. We're just waiting for Al's office to approve it. So I, I can't have them telling me, no, they can't do it and then telling the parent, yes, they can, then it's up to Al or the administration or the school department. So, so whatever they're sending, I need to validate because I don't believe what they're telling us. They've told us before, we're gonna fix this. They've told us before, we're gonna fix this. We told them, give us more buses if that'll help. We, we, we offered and we, we acquired more buses in the last school year. They still didn't fix the problem. So what they say now needs to be validated. I want our principals to validate it and see that they're comfortable with it, and then I want our principals to be able to communicate to the parents that we're making these changes, and then it needs to be monitored. Every one of them needs to be, unfortunately, this is gonna be a very, very tedious process because we need to monitor everything we change. Because if you make one change here in the system, and we've learned this the hard way here in Windsocket, it impacts other things over here that we're not aware of. And we just don't foresee the impact. So I want to avoid fixing this to cause a problem here.
Some of the situations, as you know, and we've discussed, are safety issues, where the child has to cross the street, there's no sidewalk, whatever, and you're, you're talking about a racetrack in terms of the road. So I'm, those parents are really very antsy and very nervous and scared to leave, to bring their child to the bus stop when the route was changed, and now we've got a situation. So I, I would imagine that, I don't know if you're prioritizing these, and I know you've got the whole district to deal with, but I'm hoping we're focusing on what I would consider the safety issues first.
We are focusing on safety issues. If they're identified as a safety issue, we have to vet it, is it truly a safety issue? Particularly, we run into issues when there's a main road where there's heavy traffic. We are looking at issues where there is a, potentially, there's no sidewalks, there's heavy traffic, and we have students that have to cross a street. That happens over on Front Street. That's, that's a trouble area here. We're also focusing on making sure that we can accommodate students that have transportation in either their IEP or in a 504. There are students that are vulnerable, whether they have anxiety or they have a medical condition, and we need to ensure that we're transporting them as well. There are students that have particular situations that crop up where they might have injured themselves and they need busing. And we need to balance all of those things out. So I, I wouldn't say that we're, we're focusing on safety, we're focusing on ensuring that we're providing transportation to our vulnerable population. And, and while at the same time trying to focus overall, as to just the general rule of just transporting somebody on a, on a, our students on a daily, on a daily basis. And it's difficult to balance. We may have a student that has a medical need, and we have to send the bus. And there are unfortunately times where the, the need of the one outweighs the need many of the many on that, that bus, where the bus might run a little later, but we have to get that student and get him to school, but it might impact the other 38 riders getting to the school. So it's a very difficult balancing act. I would like to be fair, that it's difficult for Durham to do that. But that being said, they've done themselves no favors whatsoever. And I, I want to know, I defended them last year. They wanted some different things done with their contract, and I defended them for them being fair to us in the past. But fear is fear. Their response this year has been absolutely atrocious, and my expectations have not been met. And I'm, I'm sure you're hearing from parents that, that their expectations haven't been met either.
Mrs. Costa, you had something?
So, I know you might not be able to answer this, but I just want to know why Durham thinks that it was fair to not only change the bus routes, but not give the bus stops until the night before, where our staff had to stay until 9:00 PM? And they worked really hard to make sure our parents were notified? That was very unacceptable. And thank you to our staff that had to stay because Durham decided to send that at the last minute.
So I can, I can speak to that. So I was made aware of, of, in, in early August, that Durham did not request the bus information from our data department. My data department had mentioned, oh, we haven't seen any requests coming through. We did have a conversation with them, because they had reached out in the beginning of August and said, we haven't received any bus information. Mr. Perry and I had a meeting with them where I, I, I set down basically the deadlines as to when we would need to have the bus routes back. I'm gonna tell you right now, at Durham, prior to Bruce being there, I met with Mark Dumont. There was a call with Mark Dumont, and I believe it's Robert Hart, and I don't know if Pam, I apologize, Pam, I forgot Pam's last name, but Robert Hart spoke up at the meeting. He does, my understanding, he's the technical person on the computer over there, spoke up and assured me that the bus routes would be ready by the 16th. Subsequent to that, I received an email directed to me from the general manager indicating that they received the bus information late, and as a result, that that's impacting how fast they could turn it around. Which I then, I was at an admin meeting with Dr. McGee and our admin team, I stepped out of the office and reminded them that it's not my job to go over and hand them a bus list when they need it. It's their job as our vendor, we spend multi-million dollars with, millions with them, to request it when they need it to execute their process in a timely fashion. I, I can be honest with you, I'm, I'm at a loss for describing this, because they're a transportation company. And oftentimes, I said it, and we kinda talked a little bit. Their sole purpose is to transport our students back and forth between home and school on time every day. That's their core function. They're paid millions of dollars to do this, and, and they fail at it, year after year. There are some reasons behind it that we need to work on on our end. There's some times, start times of school we've talked about, we can adjust. But as a general rule, that's what's a requirement of them. They were told for months, when are you gonna get a supervisor? And they kept saying, we're interviewing, we haven't found someone. I can't force them to hire someone. They didn't have anybody locally as a supervisor. They had their general manager over Cumberland and, and, and the Windsocket schools. I think it's reflective of the fact that they didn't have somebody locally managing the office here. Because had they, they would have at some point, I would like to have thought, if you're transporting, I don't know, 3,000 students, you would have said, well, I need their names and addresses so I can route them.
Yeah, that would make sense.
I think it's a very logical thing. I think any parent that asks any one of us that question, I can't, for the life of me, give an answer legitimately without saying, yeah, why wouldn't you say, where's the info?
Right.
So, so we're dealing with, with that. And I wasn't here. I, I, I want to thank my colleagues who all stayed late, because I, I know they did, because they were texting me at seven o'clock at, at night, saying, we're still here at McPhee, working on this. Even our superintendent, I want to point out, our superintendent of schools stayed late. I'm not, I've worked in six districts, I'm not aware of a superintendent, and I'm not saying, stayed late to make sure we can get the busing information out. The superintendent of a school district, one of the largest districts in the state, had to stay late because the bus company couldn't get their act together.
May I ask if anybody from the bus company came to help us out?
I'm not sure if they came over here. I don't know if they stayed in their office. But I'm gonna take a step further. We had another issue going on with our students. We have our pre-K students that needed harnesses. I instructed the bus company last year, because repeatedly, they would not have harnesses. They would say, we don't have any, we have to order them, and it takes days to come in. They were instructed, Mrs. Morel and I worked with them last year, to have harnesses on hand, in stock, so we're not waiting. Because when you're waiting, that means a child can't attend school if our parent can't get them here. We were told we had to send the list over. We worked on it. We've had some difficulties internally. We had sent over a list, and we realized the report ran wrong, they corrected it, they sent over, it was later in the day, on a Friday, before pre-K would start. The response, we got back, we sent over it later in the afternoon, and at the very end of the day, I got a response back, due to the late nature of this arriving, we're not gonna have them ready for Tuesday, the day after Labor Day. It's gonna take us a few days to, to resolve this, and we have to get the harnesses in. And they ordered harnesses to rush them to, to arrive. Had they followed the instructions I gave them last year, which Lisa, their former manager knew, but she left and took all of the knowledge of how Windsocket operates with her, they didn't have any. They had to order them overnight, it delayed things several more days. On top of which, and Mr. Dumont did work over the three-day weekend, but I'm only aware of only him working. I don't know about anyone else here in, in the audience here at this meeting tonight, but I gotta tell you right now, if I was, if I was providing the certain type of service that they're providing, I would have stayed all weekend long to make sure we got it all routed and working. Even though we knew the harness might not be in, I at least would have had the routing done and had that all ready. So on Monday morning, even though it was a holiday, or Tuesday morning, I could have responded back, we've got it all ready, we're, we're working on the harness, we're gonna do that. I didn't get any reassurances like that.
Communication is poor.
Communication is, yes. It, it is absolutely poor. And, and quite frankly, I, I'm, I'm at a loss. I've worked in six districts, I'm at a loss for the performance that we're getting out of Durham.
It just seems like the problems are relying on us to try to fix it, when it's solely on them to be trying to fix these kind of problems, because we can't fix these problems without them fixing it on their end. Yes, like you said, there's some things that we need to work on, but they really need to get it together, because this is really starting to get aggravating.
I was called out to Gold Park Elementary School because a bus had oil leaking from underneath it, it had a horrible smell. I had to direct them to send a new bus there. While waiting there for the students that need to get onto that bus, because there was a delay, they were sending an alternative bus. I go in to use the restroom, and I came out, there were still students in the main lobby, and I waited 20 more minutes, and I was told that the bus came and took the students. So I said, well, there's all students here. And then I found out, the other students who were there, they weren't waiting for the alternate bus. They were just waiting for another bus that was running late. Our buses are arriving at Gold Park Elementary, which is the leg of the run, which has traditionally been late. They're arriving at four and after four o'clock.
Wow. Doesn't school get out at like 3?
School dismisses at 3:20 or 3:25. They're atrocious.
Ms. Kinnon. I can tell you, three days last week and just today, I was late to our own admin meeting. I didn't get there until 4:30. The last Durham bus left my, left my building at 4:05. I have students with severe needs. I have the only SID population in elementary in my building, the only medically fragile in my building. Parents whose students need their children home at times for their medication, for things to that nature. I had parents pulling up, one in particular, to pick her child up, because once again, her child's bus was the late bus.
Wow.
Because the children cannot sustain waiting.
Okay.
So that, that, that is where we're at. I'm expecting to see some suggestions and some improvements. They've sent over a, a list of them. They'll be shared with the principals tomorrow, after I can validate what the improvement's gonna result from the, from these, these recommendations. And then we will implement those and monitor how it goes from there. Speaking of transportation in general, if you haven't already seen, there's a statewide issue as well. They're not controlled by us. I want to make sure it's very clear to the committee, because you may get calls about transportation that are outside the control of the Windsocket Education Department. We participate in the statewide transportation system. That was something that RIDE initially required districts to participate in. We've now found that they too are struggling with transportation, similar issues that we're running into. I think there's some major problems in the transportation industry, and they're working on that as well. But I want to make sure it's very clear, well, we can address many of the things, I think, here in the district. There are some things statewide that, that we have no control over, and unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the state. And their issues are even worse than ours. Their issues are, they don't have a driver, and they're asking parents to come pick up their kid, or they don't have a driver and they're gonna get another one to cover, and it's gonna take one to two hours for them to be there, which means that child has to wait a couple extra hours at our school. Our principals have to wait late. So there, there are even worse issues going on beyond what we're experiencing with Durham. Durham, I think as a result of the aforementioned issue or items that I talked about earlier, I think as a result of that, we need to go back and to adjust things. But I want to make sure it's very clear, this wasn't a typical start of the school year. I don't know, I don't know exactly what's occurred here, but we are digging into it. But first, before we can really even dig into that, is we need to make sure we're make, we're accommodating any of these things that are, that are cropping up, like moving a bus stop that might not be safe, or having, you know, a parent where they did receive busing and now they're not, and figuring out why.
Do we know what the routes are now? I mean, have they communicated that to you? That here are the routes, or else it's a, it's a by guessing, by gosh, situation from day to day?
I am operating under the assumption that we're running the same routes that we've been running since day one, which is the ones that they published and sent out to the schools.
Right.
I would like to think that if they made these changes, that they're communicating all of them. I'll be meeting with Bruce later this week, and we're gonna list out all of the protocols as to how communication's gonna work and who needs to be notified. And, and then we will go from there. But I've seen some absolutely ridiculous things when it comes to communication. I've, I've, I've seen, not Bruce, and I see Mark, but I've seen Robert send out emails to principals that are no longer here. And I'm not sure how that occurs. All they have to do is ask, like, there are some major communication issues, there are some personnel adjustments that they need to make, but I'm, I'm concerned about requiring them or forcing them to do it, because if I do, whatever knowledge they have that can contribute to solving this might disappear as well. Their biggest losses was Lisa back in February.
This is the first year of the contract?
Yes.
For a year?
Yes.
I think that's something we can discuss in the facility subcommittee more in depth as to where we are with our contract with them, what's occurring. But I just felt it'd be prudent that there be some type of acknowledgement, my update as to what's occurring. We're not oblivious to it. We are working, every day, Dr. McGee and I, and my colleagues are, are working on troubleshooting, trying to make sure we're making adjustments to make things right. But I want to make sure it's very clear that the school department, this administration, didn't unilaterally change bus routes and not communicate it out, or, or do the poor job of it. Had I known that they were doing this, quite frankly, there would have been notifications going out, there would have been warnings. You know, we have any other event that occurs in our district that impacts our students, we, we send things out. Dr. McGee sent out in his newsletter, here's the bus routes. Certainly, having worked here for eight years, if there was a change, it would have been communicated by the superintendent and our principals, who do an excellent job of outreach, to say, hey, guys, you know, I'll take Savoy. You know, mend and row, we're changing a bus stop over here. They would let those parents know. That didn't happen.
Dr. McGee? Do we want to invite somebody from Durham? Mr. Notoriani, do we want to have representatives from Durham speak at this meeting, or?
I'm gonna defer to our attorney, because this is not an agenda item, this is an update that I'm providing, so I'm not sure if it'd be appropriate for them to speak, unfortunately.
Then we won't. Then we won't. Back to McGee.
I, I just, do any other school committee members have any, any comments?
I was gonna, essentially, I'm, I'm not the lawyer for the school committee, but I was gonna essentially say, I don't think that we should have Durham speak, simply because, if anybody is familiar with what's going on with statewide system, that's in the courts. The ACLU filed litigation because the students with special needs and IEPs on the statewide buses were not, either, either not getting their buses, are waiting two to three hours for drop-off at home. And that's a violation of their IEPs, it's a violation of their civil rights. So I think that in light of that, we need to take a step back from discussing this publicly. If you disagree, Caroline, I'll defer, but I think that we're better not to discuss this publicly any further.
Then we'll deal with it later at the facilities meeting, once you have more information.
Yes, there will be more information, and there will most likely be a facility subcommittee meeting coming up next week, and the major focus will be on transportation and what changes, I'm hoping by next week, with them having a supervisor in place, they can fix these things, or, or, or adjust back whatever they need to adjust back.
Caroline was answering the question, stop.
Caroline, I thought she answered.
Finish your answer.
I was nodding my head since showing.
She agreed. Yeah, she did. That's okay. So you're all set. Dr. McGee?
I, I, I'm gonna hold off on my comments.
Okay.
This evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna wait until we can have a, maybe a more formal meeting. I certainly have my, my thoughts, but I'm, I'm gonna hold off on that tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology, technology facilities update. do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve memorandum of agreement with the Wensocket Teachers Guild regarding substitute coverage for 2024 to 2027. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclerc, Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an MOA that the district has already had bound in file. The intention was to roll this into the new contract, unfortunately, it was missed. This MOA provides an opportunity for teachers during their free periods to cover classrooms and be compensated for it. It actually gives us a great amount of flexibility, so we're allowed to utilize teachers who are already in the building to cover vacant positions. There is a 1.2% of one-seventh of the salary of their daily rate, that's what they're paid to cover that free period. The one-seventh is to teach the class, and the extra point two is to have coverage and payment for the extra work that's done outside, the grading, the meetings, anything else, because the classes are run entirely by the teacher. So we're just representing this to you, we're gonna want to extend it for another three years, and when we get to next year's contract, we're actually gonna roll this into the contract, because I think it's been very beneficial to the school district to have this opportunity, this ability to create a coverage situation for classes that are vacant.
It's, if I could add, it's beneficial, it's very beneficial to our students, because in these situations, we have teachers who are out for an extended period of time, and we're unable to find long-term substitutes in some of these areas because of certifications. So this is an opportunity for us to provide the instruction to our students from teachers who have the certification and have the skill set to provide that instruction to the students.
And might I add, it's for vacancies, vacant positions that we have as well. We also utilize this to help cover vacant positions until, you know, we're able to fill them.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yeah, just quickly, does this ensure that the same teacher is covering the same class of students while this teacher's out?
Absolutely, Mr. Burke, the same teacher is put into that class, it's part of their schedule, they give up the same, they give up their free period, and they cover the same students day after day.
That's good, thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We have no other items on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:11 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.[1794.57]